Too much to do.
I know, we all do.
What's the address here?
Yep.
One hundred North Court Street.
We don't need an address, do we?
Yeah, one hundred North Court Street.
Well, it's not going to work for me. Because it's...
Mr. Thompson.
Oh, wait, it's gotta be saying...
See, he's ahead of you.
You have the pledge.
Where's it at?
Why don't we go ahead and call our meeting to order, please? If we could all rise for a moment of silence, then we'll ask Councilmember Marvin Thompson to lead us into the pledge to flag.
Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, shall we call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tinkles Sains?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you, we have a full house. Each of you in your packet should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting of August the twenty-second. If you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
I make a motion.
Thank you.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Right behind the minutes in your package should also be the copy of our latest check register. If you could indicate if you've received that check register. Thank you. Chief, would you get the public comments sheet, please? Good luck. Thank you. This has proven to be a hard habit for me to break. You know, much like when you run into the Lieutenant Governor, you refer to them as Governor. And when I refer to Assistant Chief Swanigan, you refer to him as Chief. It seems like every time I've seen him since his promotion, I've referred to him as Captain. So I'm trying to acknowledge his new title. The next item on our agenda is public comments, and we have one gentleman who has signed up for public comments. Mr. Roach?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please come to the podium.
I'm Larry Roach, new resident in Georgetown. Moved here from Lexington about a month ago. I live at two oh one Rhodes Lane. And the reason I'm here tonight is to make everyone aware, for those who are not, how I feel dangerous Old Oxford Road is. This is coming from the connector up to our subdivision, which is Abbey at Old Oxford. That's where we live. And there's quite a number of houses there now. And there's gonna be a lot more to come. Lot of semis, a lot of trailers, heavy equipment being moved, dump trucks, et cetera. The things that are missing there, in my opinion, is, one, we really need paint striping badly. That would make a huge difference, in my opinion, in terms of the safety of that road. Now, it's kind of a Band-Aid type thing, but at least, you know, you'd have a better realization of where you were during those movements.
When you mentioned the paint stripes, Mr. Roach, you talked about on the sides of the roads to delineate the borders of the road, or the center line?
Well, the one that came to my mind was the center line. Now, the edge of the road would be very helpful also, but there's not, there's not much room there for paint stripes. But yes, both would be really helpful. So I'm here to request that that be budgeted, or whatever it takes to have that done. The other thing that's wrong, there are a number of potholes on the contiguous edge of the roadways. And one of them, right where you come into those bad curves, is so bad that you'd break a wheel if you happened to just slip off the road. And then to carry it a little further, where you come out of Lowe's and go to the interceptor, there's a huge pothole where you turn right there. But that's kind of off my agenda for the moment. But I just want to make everybody aware of that, because it's really pretty bad. And lastly, the dead trees. My neighbor and I were talking, and she said that a limb had fallen off of one of the trees last year, totally in her car, and with two or three of her kids in the back seat. And there are dead trees on that road. Especially when you're going out on the left-hand side, there's some dead trees there. And so, those, the dead ones, the obvious dead ones, need to be removed also.
Now, on the dead trees, Robert Bruin and Public Works have been out and looked at some of these dead trees. We are aware of some of those issues. He's attempting to get those scheduled, to clear out some of the worst dead trees. But I think each of the things that you brought up warrants us going out and taking a look at it, and see if we can make some corrections.
Yeah, I'm fearful, of course, as you get older, you get more conservative with your driving habits supposedly. But it's a little scary driving there. I've been doing it a month now, and it's pretty, pretty close with those trucks and things like that. So anything you can do to fix the potholes and the paint striping would sure be appreciated by all of our neighbors in the subdivision out there.
Thank you for coming in this evening.
Yeah, well, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, that main pothole he's talking about is on connector, rather than coming out of Lowe's. It's that big around and that deep.
It's huge.
You know, you could lose yourself in that one. It's how big it is.
It's massive.
And there's the other one that's really big, is the one coming into the curves on Old Oxford.
Right.
Going toward Lowe's or toward town. It's real big, old.
There's also another problem that it may be too late to fix. You are the subdivision, the first subdivision on Old Oxford, right, right, kind of looking to the back of the apartments, the townhouses, is that yours?
Yeah, and it's on the left as you go past the apartments.
Okay. The turn-in to that was never done properly, into that subdivision, and then, when it started, its subdivision died, and then it's brought back up again. But that's the question, is the new person that took over that, should they have not fixed that turn-in? Because they don't have the proper turn-in into that subdivision that's in front of there.
I don't know, that's something we'd have to look at.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really very awkward out there, the way it's all been configured. There's three lanes per minute, then there's two lanes.
You actually have, like, two and a third lane, almost, and going in or out of there, you don't have enough room to turn in and out, especially with traffic kind of coming and stopping in behind you, too.
Yeah. Do you all paint stripe the roadways?
We...
Contract.
Contract?
We don't do that now.
We don't do it in-house.
That would be very helpful. It really, it doesn't sound like much, sitting here tonight, but it would be very, very helpful towards the safety on that road. So, I thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Also, I don't think there's any streetlights out there either. Are there streetlights out through there?
No.
That's right, there's no, that's, I walk out through there, and that's another danger, because there's no streetlights, that you can't, if you get caught and it's too dark, and turn into that where you're turning in, it's hard, because the turn-in's not right, there's no lines on the street, and no streetlights either.
No, it's real dark out there, that's true. And especially driving there at night is really tough. Well, thanks again.
Nice meeting you.
Anything else out there?
Oh, there's Tom.
We only get so much of him, Tom.
Sure there is.
He's blending right in with this bunch.
Well played. Let's see, next on the agenda, for everybody's enjoyment tonight, Mayor's comments. Everybody can relax for a few moments now. It won't be too long. First item on our agenda is for council to set the date for both trigger treat and our spooktacular activity. And we're recommending, as we always do, that we keep it on Halloween night, which will be Monday, October the thirty-first. Trigger treat and the spooktacular, as everyone's aware, the spooktacular is for the younger children to go through the businesses downtown. And the hours from it this year will be from eleven till two. That's always been during school hours.
On Monday, on Monday.
Monday. With trigger treat being from...
Six to eight usually.
Six to eight typically. So...
I'll make a motion if that's what you like.
Thank you.
Sounds good to me.
I'll second. Go ahead, knock it out. We all like Halloween.
We do like Halloween.
Like never.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think Karen's wondering.
Well, I was just...
Are you okay?
No. I'm never okay.
Spooktacular's where the kids comes downtown and all businesses.
Yeah, but we used to keep it until kind of late, because the kids are in school at that time. It was for all school kids. Laurie, has it changed? Living to two is what, the time? So it's for the...
Small children, preschool, homeschooled children. And it's kind of gotten so big that we're trying to bring it back to what its intention originally was.
Okay, well, I don't agree with that. I was just thinking, how did change look aggressive? I'm here.
And that was their request to the council, to allow them to change it to ten, ten to two.
All right, that's good, I'm good.
I just, I have to make a few comments about the Festival of Horse, if you'd just please. I am so proud of this community and all of our city departments for the work that they did during the Festival of the Horse. We will start with Laurie, who, I'm shocked she's at the city council meeting tonight. This would be about your fifth straight night of working. But with Laurie's ideas and energy, we had a slightly smaller scale Festival of the Horse that people seemed to enjoy more. Being able to keep Broadway open was a big help to our citizens. I just think that the planning that went on for the festival and the execution was something we can all be real proud of. It also, I saw all of you all downtown just about during the festival, and I thought it was an outstanding weekend for the Georgetown Police Department.
Yes.
And the way they presented themselves with the new graphics car. We started off on Thursday night with an outstanding event that the fire department put on. Chief Ward, I think we had more people at the chili cook-off than we've ever had in the past. And we didn't run out of chili this year. It makes people happy when you don't run out of chili during the fireman's chili cook-off. And Laurie's already mentioned ideas to me about making the chili cook-off even bigger next year, and ways that we might be able to expand it from one block into two blocks, so...
Have to get a loan.
But the fire department did an outstanding job, the police department did an outstanding job. Our Public Works folks always bend over backwards on festival weekend. And this year, they were hard to miss. They looked very professional with the matching lime green Public Works shirts and ball caps. I thought they looked very professional. It was coordinated, and just couldn't have been happier with it. Chief, when, at some point during, right after the big parade on Saturday night, I was in the car with Chief Bossy, and just listening to the radio communication, and how much coordination there was at every intersection, and the way we let traffic go in staggered ways. This was a well-put-together event, and our compliments to all the city staff, and Laurie, tourism just did a great job. Thank you. For those of you that had a chance today to attend the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, our speaker was Chief Bossy. And it was an outstanding speech. He represents this community and our police department so well. He talked about, I think, the title of his speech, what are our current circumstances? What is the environment in which we do our work, and the ways in which we're trying to serve the community? He even addressed the national situation and the tension that exists, and the way we're trying to work through that. I had someone approach me after the chief got through speaking, and I thought he summed it up nicely. He said, you know, I bet when you go to bed at night, you've got a lot of worries on your mind, but the police department's probably not one of them. So that was the impression that our chief gave our community today. So I was very proud of that. As an update, I want you all to know that Andrew and I will be meeting on September the twentieth with a group of folks from the Catholic Church and the Diocese from Lexington. We're working diligently to wrap up the loose ends of that transaction. Our outside council has prepared a first draft of a lease, the big capital lease that we had to put in place. The Diocese and the church has been reviewing it, and we will meet on the twentieth to start addressing all the issues that we need to address, so that this can get, so that we can see this transaction through to completion. We've also been working pretty closely with the Heritage Commission, Heritage Council, on making sure that we get the roof project bid correctly and in motion. Since those are federal dollars, there are a lot of strings attached to those dollars. And unfortunately, because they are federal dollars, and because the project exceeds two thousand dollars, we'll have to pay prevailing wage on the project. For a state project, for state funding or our own funding, that threshold is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars before we have to go to the prevailing wage. If they're a federal dollars, you pierce that limit real quickly, at two thousand dollars. But we are working with the church and the Heritage Council on getting that completed. I'm really pleased to report to you that we have a new Director of Public Works, and that is Robert Bruin.
All right.
You'll recall, Robert has been an interim for a period of time.
Great job.
And we actually hired him under, through a temporary agency, on a six-month contract. But we've now completed the transition, and Robert is now our full-time Director of Public Works.
Great.
I know that makes the council happy, and it sure makes us happy here in City Hall.
And you let him off this week to go hunting?
Well, he's actually fishing for a week and a half. He is not with us tonight. He is fishing somewhere, but we're delighted that he's our employee. Also, want the council to know that the Ed Davis Ball is going to be held on Saturday, October the fifteenth. I would like for the city to purchase a table at the Ed Davis Ball, and invite each of the council members to attend, if your schedule will permit. So I'll have Arlene send out an email to see who might be able to attend. Now, I have to warn the council in advance that the speaker that evening is me. So...
Wow.
You may want to stay home.
Let me put my hand back down.
It'll be another repeat of Mayor's comments, but...
That's what he'll say when he, I got a few comment, Mayor comments here.
But if you all can join us...
Are we talking about spouses along with the...
We, I think that on a Saturday evening for a community event...
That's the only way I can get out, is take her with me.
If your spouses can join you, I would encourage that.
All right.
I think that'd be a great outcome. In that same vein, while we want to be careful with city tax dollars, I do think it's a really positive thing when council members can attend certain community events. And this was on my mind today, as I looked around our Chamber of Commerce luncheon. And Millie and Polly were able to attend, Chuck was able to attend, and it is my belief that if council members are willing to attend a community event like a chamber luncheon, that the city can pick up the tab for that. So, going forward, if you all would like to attend chamber functions, I think it's appropriate for the city to cover those costs. For those of you that self-paid today, you know, if you'd like to be reimbursed, I'll work with you on that. But I just want to emphasize that if you all are willing to invest that time, it's appropriate for us to cover those costs. Also, to let you know that we started off another week by swearing in a new police officer today, Mr. Ryan Hill. Some of you may have seen that on Facebook, and delighted to welcome Officer Hill to our department. And I believe that completes all the mayor's comments. Yay! I know it is. I know it is. Item seven on our agenda, GMWSS approval of a land purchase.
Good evening. My request tonight's a little bit different, because this wasn't really planned, it's one of those opportunities that comes up, and even when you look at it, you go, that's not a bad idea. So what happened? We were approached by David Caldwell to purchase that vacant lot across from our building on Hillside Drive. Discussed with Les Jarvis, our chairman, he was fine with it. I had it appraised by Hawkins Smith Agency, it was appraised at a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. It's about 1.7 acres. The board authorized me to negotiate with Mr. Caldwell, and we settled on a price of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The board has approved that purchase price, and I'm here tonight to ask the councils to also approve that price. It will give us a couple options in the future. It'll give us room to grow when that time comes again, which it undoubtedly will. Instead of having to move, we can just grow across the street. You know, it opens up other possibilities as we continue to grow. Any other 1.7 acres in Georgetown, I wouldn't even look at, but because it's right next to where we are, I think it's one of those deals we'd like to take advantage of.
Bob brought it to City Hall, and given that it's contiguous property to where we're planning our future for GMWSS, it made sense to pursue this transaction. How do you all anticipate finding it, Bob?
We'll just pay cash.
That's an answer I can live with.
I'll make a motion then.
I'll second.
There you go.
Probably not necessary, but since we're approving the purchase of property, why don't we do a roll call?
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Tinker Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tinkles Sains?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for tonight. That's it.
Thank you.
See you all later.
With the council's permission, I'd like to slightly alter the order of our agenda. Some of our guests may not want to sit through a full discussion about our code enforcement ordinance. So just in the interest of time, we, council has been aware of a transaction that we've been working on that would, to take advantage of the economic opportunity, requires that we close a portion of Barclay Lane. We've discussed this, but we're now to the point where the property owners on either side of the road have been notified, so...
Given consent.
Have given consent to this, so we're now ready for the council to give first reading of an ordinance that would close that portion of Barclay Lane and let this economic development activity take place. Anything you'd like to add before we have first reading?
An ordinance closing a portion of the right-of-way known as Barclay Lane in the city of Georgetown, Kentucky. Summary, presented to KRS eighty-two point four zero five, closes the portion of the public way known as Barclay Lane between its intersection with Delplane Road and the southern border of the properties owned by Siren Holdings LLC and Bojarko Properties LLC by written consent of said owners. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four. Introduced and publicly read the first time September twelfth, twenty sixteen.
Any questions for council, or the owner of the company here? The owner's attorney is here, if there are any questions after first reading. We would anticipate having second reading at our next council meeting. Yes, sir, thank you all.
I'll check with Andrew later about the new ordinance of code enforcement.
Well, I know that you'll be dying to learn all the details.
Mayor, would you want to go down and do number twelve while they're not be here all night? That's a real quick one.
Yeah, I think so, because they're out there.
Number twelve?
They might not want to listen to this code.
But they love our council.
Yeah, I know they do, but...
We do, we love it so much, but on the other hand... They might want to be home early.
Since Mr. Thompson has extended the courtesy, please, please come up and let's take care of item twelve on the agenda.
We are here tonight to request approval to purchase a twenty seventeen F-150 four-wheel-drive regular cab truck. We will be replacing an F-150 four-wheel-drive regular cab. It's a nineteen ninety-seven F-150, has close to two hundred thousand miles on it. This will be for our parts maintenance division, and it was approved in capital funding. The amount approved in capital funding was twenty-six thousand, and we're coming in at, I had that number totaled up, but on the piece of paper I brought, it is not. I think it was twenty-five nine, so I apologize for that. I picked up the wrong piece of paper. But we are under budget.
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. So the average lifespan of our trucks is twenty years?
Hey, we're getting close on some of them. This one we have worn out.
I think we've gotten your money's worth out of that one.
We sure have.
If there's no question for Sherry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Now, if we could back up on the page to item eight, number A, is, we've placed this on here as second reading of code enforcement ordinance. But I'd like to give just a little bit of an explanation upfront of where I think we are with this ordinance, and offer a suggestion on how we might move forward, and then take any questions that you all have. We want there to be adequate time for all those questions. Of course, we've been at this ordinance for some time now. We've been working on this ordinance since the Kentucky Journal Assembly finished their session and passed legislation that we believe requires us to change our code enforcement ordinance. I learned today that there are some who disagree with that requirement, but I can assure you that from the discussions Andrew and I've had, and the training sessions that Andrew has attended at the Kentucky League of Cities, we have to have a new code enforcement ordinance. And I don't think there's any question about that whatsoever. When we first brought the ordinance to council, I think council helped us make this a significantly better ordinance, with the idea that we add a five-day notice of violation period on the front end of our regulatory action, prior to any seven-day notice of a violation that would trigger a limit on their appeals time. And we've written that into subsequent drafts. So we've tried to listen to council. We also think that council's action on that regard not only makes it a better ordinance for our purposes, but it makes it a more attractive ordinance for county government to pass as well. So we think we're on the right track there. We also tried to listen very carefully to the concerns we heard at the last meeting... We also tried to listen very carefully to the concerns we heard at the last meeting about the provision in the ordinance that allowed the city attorney to settle amounts on his or her own authority. And a couple of thoughts there. We, we put that provision in the ordinance for one reason and one reason only. And that was another city who has already gone down this road strongly suggested that we give ourselves that kind of administrative flexibility from a purely practical point of view. It's not authority that we wanted to take or grab, but it was just a practical point that someone else recommended to us. And it made enough sense that we wrote it into the ordinance. My thoughts are that that is a relatively, relatively minor provision. The important thing is that we get a code enforcement ordinance passed. And I, and I think that becomes the goal that, that I'm trying to focus on and not any one provision in there. But, but having thought through, and Polly brought, brought this concern up and we've really tried to listen and talk about it and pay attention internally to those concerns. And I thought about a compromise that, that I would suggest, just for conversation, that if we, if we maintain that provision at all, the ability for the city attorney to settle cases, that we add a provision that would require the city attorney to report to the council on a quarterly basis any settlements that have been made, simply in an effort to provide that transparency and communication back to the council. That is one option. Retaining the provision that gives the attorney that ability, but adding a reporting requirement back to the council every quarter. The other option is that we strike that provision completely. Because frankly, the overall ordinance is more important than that provision. We, we want to have a good conversation about the ordinance and get it passed. I'm not going to let one provision halt our good progress. So what I was going to suggest to the council tonight, that there are these, on that, there may be other questions and I'm happy to get to those. But on the specific concern about the city attorney having the ability to settle any, any outstanding actions, I'm willing to offer you a first reading of an ordinance that maintains that provision, that adds a reporting requirement, or we are willing to offer you first reading of an ordinance that has that provision completely struck. We have both tonight. We're that committed to getting this passed and trying our best to accommodate the council's wishes. So after we answer other questions that might be outstanding or talk about this issue, I would like to ask the council for just a straw vote indicating which of those two options you're more comfortable with. And then we are in a position to do first reading of that ordinance. And this would be something that, that the council can express their desire on and we will be responsive to the council's wishes. So in terms of, I think we settled the first issue, Chuck, that, that you and others had concerns about. I believe we've written those in. To the concern that Polly expressed, we, we've got these two options that we're happy to discuss with you. Take your direction and have first reading of, of the one that you select. So hopefully that addresses those two large points that have been discussed. I'd like to hear from you all what you think about those two options and also if there are other questions about the ordinance that go beyond just these two points, we'd be happy to discuss those as well.
I did have a question actually about the eminent domain on it. Basically, from the way I read it, the board can decide when to invoke eminent domain?
No.
Really?
Oh, I would not, no.
That's what it looked like, though. Looked like they can make the decision. And I was wondering if that wouldn't be something that would be more of a council decision?
Yeah, they make the determination only that a, that a property is blighted and abandoned. That makes it eligible for eminent domain, but the city is the only body that can-
Okay.
-can declare a property, can, can take a property by eminent domain. What the statute says is that, that gives the city a 100% basis for declaring eminent domain. Otherwise, the city has to come up with some kind of justification for declaring eminent domain. This is sort of a statutorily governed process. But the only determination that the code enforcement board, and they're making it in their, they're making that determination in their role as the vacant property review board, is whether they are abandoned urban property, whether they meet the statutory criteria.
So it's page 23, 4, and 5, and 6? So elimination of blight. The city shall have the power to acquire by eminent domain any property determined to be blighted. Okay, so that's that.
Mayor, if we decide to not let the attorney have that authority to do what we were discussing, how would we come and, the people that has these liens and stuff, how, how would that effect get them reduced down? Would it not ever? It would be, so if it's $100 now and $300, you cannot give them a discount of any kind or help them out one way or the other?
If we strike that-
That's what I'm saying. If you strike it.
The city attorney could not make that decision, but this council certainly could.
So you're saying to bring it back to the council?
Which is where it should be.
Which is where it should, yeah.
This is one thing, I don't really like this. I don't like what the state has done, which I do, that was a question that I had as to whether there's another way around doing the board. Because it gives a lot of authority over to the board and takes it away from the mayor and takes it away from the council and puts it on the board. And the reason I'm so hesitant about it, at first, actually, when Andrew presented us, kind of liked it. And then as I finally started looking at it, I don't like it so much, but there may not be too much you can do about it. But it takes, the way we have frustration up here with Planning and Zoning Board and things come to us and it should have been done in Planning and Zoning or with Planning and Zoning or with the Planning and Zoning Board, then we don't really have much authority. We have the frustrations and, but we don't have the authority to really go in and correct or see that things get done. And I'm just afraid it takes so much authority away from the elected officials that get voted on by the people and puts it in the hands of the board. And the board, the way it's set up, is appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council, but it's set up just like the P&amp;Z board is. If the mayor doesn't, because this happened to me, accidentally, not on purpose, but I didn't make the appointment in time, and then the board even picks who they want on the board. So, and that was, that was a bad thing that happened and that's not a good thing to let the board pick who's on the board, but it can happen. And it did happen, so on, on P&amp;Z. But nevertheless, that's in there too. So Andrew, you can answer the question on it because reading, I pulled off the information you gave me with the state, pulled it off. And on this, why it's fuzzy in my mind as to whether you have to do it with the board or not, that you can still do because of this section 2A that says you can force your code enforcement pursuant to the new statute or by any means authorized by law, including but not limited to direct enforcement through enactment of an ordinance provided by section six. And then section six, which is just where it takes a Philadelphia lawyer to figure it out, says that, says that any local government may establish an order of reasonable standards pursuant to this section, blah, 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 blah. So here, those two sections don't necessarily say it has to be, it has to be a board. I mean, I think we need stronger code enforcement ordinances that can do a little bit more and get things done a little faster. But it's just, it's just like creating another set of bureaucrats that we don't have, that we can't answer to the people for. Once we take it. And then the other issue that I have with it is based on the state statute, it's nuisance and zoning, and then it does allow the language to go that you could put other things in it, but there's so much been put into ours. It's no longer just about the nuisance and, the nuisance and zoning. It's about all the other stuff that's gotten labeled into it. And like, one of our big nuisances that we have tons of problems with is, is noise. And is that addressed in here? The noise ordinance and the barking dogs is addressed in here? Well, I missed that. So tell me what section that's in so I can go back and read that. I'm always looking out for the dogs now.
Yeah, the, the way I did it was at the end of the entire nuisance chapter, I simply put in a provision that says this, you'll see a lot, you'll see a lot of that in there. I don't include the actual ordinance because I didn't change the substantive law. All I did was say, "This chapter now becomes subject to enforcement by the code enforcement board." And I had in my presentation a list of all the things that now become subject to. So if you saw it in that, in that checklist, I've made the change there in the ordinance as to which section-
Maybe this is what it is. It's code ordinance entitled annual inspection. No, that's not it. Never mind.
I was going to ask, did you get a chance to do the table of contents, Andrew? Because it wasn't attached on this.
I did not. I apologize. That completely slipped my mind.
Actually, it would have really helped try, I just tried to study it last night and it would have really helped to have flipped through and do-
I can get you all that in a, in a day or two.
Okay. That, that would help.
That would help a lot. Because it's, it's a lot to, to look through, you know? It really, it's confusing.
And what about meeting, since we're wanting to do this as an interlocal agreement? We haven't met with the county or with any of that. So should we not be meeting with them as we're making corrections and changes or whatever to see what changes and corrections they would like to make to it? Shouldn't that be, shouldn't we've had an interlocal meeting?
The way we've set up this ordinance purposefully is that we can pass this ordinance independently and they can pass their ordinance independently. And the board, the, the interlocal agreement will govern the selection of the board and sort of the, just the basics of how the board will, will come together as a body. But each individual jurisdiction can funnel its code enforcement ordinance through that board and the board can, can enforce it as that jurisdiction asks. We would like there to be consistency and we've asked those jurisdictions to be as consistent as possible, but it is by no means necessary. So we, we pass what is most appropriate for the city and, and I think that's, that's important. And the board, by whatever means we establish it, can, can administer it according to those standards without, without regard for how the county does theirs or the other two cities do theirs.
Well, now, when you say how we establish it, how will we establish it?
Well, the way we, the way the ordinance reads is, it says, it establishes it as five members appointed by the mayor. And then it has a provision that it says, however, in the event that the city and the county and other jurisdictions enter into an interlocal agreement, those provisions for a governing board, who appoints who and who gets how many appointments, will supersede that, will come into effect. So whatever this council decides and whatever the fiscal court decides and the approved interlocal will then take over and that will become the new board, assuming that happens. So we've put it in place such that we, we can't really, in my opinion, we can't afford to, to count on the fact that the county and the other cities come on board when we have a legal obligation to meet the, the December 31st deadline. So we had to write it such that if they don't, what we have is still binding.
What obligation does the county have for a co, just, I'm not talking about to join us in their local, but what, do they have an obligation to do something by the 31st?
Well, if they want to do any type of administrative enforcement, they are required.
Now, what's the difference, what are you talking about administrative versus?
Judicial.
Okay.
In other words, taking everything to court every time. So there's no, there's no mowing the grass, there's no cleaning up, you know, dumps, there's none of that stuff without having to go to court. And that was long ago recognized as a substantial burden on local governments. So they've created numerous, over time, they've created numerous statutory schemes for administrative enforcement. And this is sort of the culmination of those different schemes. But that, in my mind, is the two alternatives. There's administrative enforcement as authorized by the new House Bill 422, or there's judicial enforcement.
So what you, which you've got, what we still probably have, then, with the confusion of the languages here, is that you do still have maybe two ways of, of doing, doing your action.
Sure, there's zero administrative enforcement is also an option.
Which is not where we're going. So we're going to go one or the other, or a combination of the two could be presented.
And it kind of is because there's a provision in the ordinance that says, "We always have the discretion to choose to do something by judicial enforcement." And I'll, I'll tell you that when it comes to something really big like demolishing a house, I'm always going to pick judicial enforcement.
Because we did in the past take down a few houses here in Georgetown and, and we didn't have all, all of this new stuff to go by and we were able to, to do it. Took a while, but we were able to do it with due process and, and all that, so we did it. So there is two ways then to do, to do a code enforcement issue, or a code enforcement ordinance.
Oh, sure.
Okay. So what if we, what if, and, and I actually like to, since I now understand that, look at this a little bit better, can we not break some of it out and so that not everything is pushed under? It feels like everything that's in here is going to be pushed under a code enforcement board and that's going to be also an expense to go along with it because if they end up seeing a lot of cases, they got to have an attorney to do this. And then it takes so much of it out of our hands. Now, one thing, I think it's great to go in front of a code enforcement board and they may never meet, is for the grass. That's one of our biggest problems in Georgetown. And you ask anybody in here and that's going to be the biggest problem and that's the biggest headache the mayor has during the summertime, is having phone calls about when are you going to mow, how are we going to get the mow? To put that into a board issue, but then some of the other things, maybe not be that, that rigid and that strict with our, because we still have a way to get it done. It may take a little longer, but we still have a way of getting it done without putting those restraints.
Andrew mentioned the, the difficulty for local government in using the judicial process. The other issue is the difficulty for the judicial process and the fact that our code enforcement issues do not rise to a level that the court system wants to deal with and they don't.
I understand that.
If we say we're only going to use a judicial model-
That's not what I said. I said a combination of the two models together.
I'm just saying if, if we, if we don't have, well, it, it's ultimately a council decision, but, but I think that using, I think we're, we're going backwards if we use a judicial model rather than the new tools that are available to us.
I just, I don't, of course, I still would like to have time to study, not that I haven't been reading it, but it's 50 pages. It's, it's complicated. If somebody gets brought in front of a code enforcement board, they need an attorney with them to be on the other side of the, the issue, to, to fight with it and to, to place their case. So I just want to make sure that we're not going overboard with it. And based on what the state has said, it's said for local governments, including, it said not limited to, which is why you've put the extra, any zoning or nuisance ordinance. So there's things in here that I don't think are just nuisance ordinance. And that's maybe something that gets later, that you can kind of break that out for me and I don't have to take up everybody's, everybody's time with that.
The true legal standard in the statute is any ordinance enforced by civil penalties-
Okay.
-may be enforced under this. We're not including zoning in that because there's actually a contradictory statute. I don't, I don't think they've quite realized that yet, but-
With the sign ordinance?
Well, the, the state law on, on zoning says that all zoning-related issues have to go to the Board of Adjustments. So when, when the other ordinance says any, that's a little bit of a conflict. I have left zoning completely as it is, but the things that are under there would be your nuisance ordinance, your animal ordinance, that's a change, all of your codes, your building code, your electrical code, your fire code, your property maintenance code. And those are the, really the most significant ones. Off the top of my head, I'm not really thinking of any other substantial- Off the top of my head, I'm not really thinking of any other substantial, I mean, tho- those are all, the, oh, most of those are gonna be in the nature of nuisance-type claims. If a house is falling down, it, it goes beyond the nuisance value into the safety.
But that doesn't, if it's safety, that doesn't have to go in front of the, the, that can be done immediately without having to, if it's, if it's danger, then it can go immediately and doesn't have to go.
But there are multiple levels of safety. Anytime you go and you take action that is in the nature of safety, you're, you're doing this to abate an immediate safety action. You're, you're doing so without the color of due process of law. And you're also risking not being able to get your money back. So that, that would be a, that'd be an action I would not recommend in most cases, unless it's a dire emergency. But there are safety issues that are of a general nature that need to be fixed, that are technically both nuisance and safety issue.
Andrew, quick question for you. How, how often, either will this come up, or does this come up? What, what kind of volume would this generate?
We have, in the, in the three years that I've been here, we have had one appeal.
So we're not talking about a significant amount of, of conflict?
Really not. I, I don't want to minimize the impact this ordinance will have, because we will step up our enforcement.
Okay.
But the, the track, the track record is, an, an appeal is a rarity.
Okay. And what the mayor ha- has, has kind of given us the option on would be for the city attorney, whomever that may be, to negotiate, is that the right word, to negotiate a settlement?
I think that's, that's a fair way of stating.
Is there a threshold on that level? Would it be appropriate for there to be a threshold on that level? I'm just asking the question to you or to the mayor. I don't, I don't, I'm just trying to help.
You, you can't, you can't negotiate, you as a city attorney's position, are not able to negotiate on behalf of the city and other things unless the city council has given you permission to do that. So you're asking to go on and do that, and give you a blanket, blanket to say it's okay, without that coming in front of the council each time?
I, I think, I'll, I'll be honest, the mayor said it best. We're, I'm not, we're not married to that provision. We put that provision in there because it was recommended to us. I still think there is sound policy in saying, not every case should have to go to court every time.
I agree.
I, I think there ought to be some kind of a threshold on that. It is, it's very difficult from a drafter's perspective to put the appropriate limiting language in there to where we're not going down the road. Man, I really wish I hadn't written it that way.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I don't want, you know, a fifty-dollar fine. I don't want for us to have to deal with fifty-dollar fines at every council meeting and have somebody in here try, you know, I mean, I, I don't think we need to be dealing with those either.
My recommendation is, if you're gonna not leave it as is, take it out. Take, or if you, I mean, add it, when I say leave it as is, that doesn't include the mayor's addition of the transparency. But if you're gonna take the authority away or limit it, just take it away. And then we, we can always go to court, and the court can always settle. The court could order us to settle. And, and in a lot of cases, that's the thing, is the courts do order settlement talks. The courts will say, "Look, this is a ten thousand dollar claim, you all sit down in a room, and you talk about this." And I have to bring it back to you, and we'd have to, you know, go behind closed doors and approve it, and that's fine. Um, but it means, it means every time they have to go to court, or, or pay.
And it, and it could be, again, we're, we're, we're trying to be sensitive to where the council's concerns are. And if we wish, if the council would wish to strike that provision, we can see how this works for a while. And if it gum, if it becomes a burden.
Right.
We can go back and amend the ordinance.
Right, right.
And, and re-grant the authority. Uh, we're just trying to get it to a point where the council's comfortable with what the ordinance directs us to.
And you've given us two fair options, so, I mean, it sounds like most people already have their mind made up where they wanna be. Should we go ahead and take that straw vote, or should somebody make a motion for one or the other?
Or if, if there are, and, and I appreciate that, David, distilling it down to those two things. Unless there are other concerns that are separate from this particular issue. I, I wanna solve this issue, unless there are other concerns, and then I wanna make sure they get heard as well.
Well, I still have, what is the cost associated with the board? And, and does a code enforcement officer now work for the board, like P and Z has, working for the board?
A code enforcement officer still works for the city. And actually, the code enforcement officer, technically, when they appear before the board, they are doing so as a plaintiff. So they, they would actually be, if you wanted to, if you wanted to style it that way, code enforcement officer on behalf of the city versus property owner. There is that wall of separation. There, that's, that's kind of the point of the board, is they're a completely independent body. They're meant to take the, say this lightly, they're meant to take the, the politics out of it and be an administrative board that looks at it based on what's in the law, and then the, the checks and balance on that is an appeal to a judge. And the city, just like in a, in a criminal case, has to come and argue before both bodies that their side is right, that they did the right things, and that body, those two bodies make a determination. Did we get it right, or did we get it wrong? And, and actually, the, the Supreme Court clarified a couple of years ago that, um, despite what the statute says, an appeal to this, to this, the, um, district court is a, a, what they call a de novo review. It's as though the code enforcement board review never happened. They look at everything again, um, because district courts have no appellate jurisdiction under the Kentucky Constitution. So, um.
But is there not something in the ordinance that if you don't do, the citizen doesn't do it all in the timely fashion or something, that then they lose their right to go to district court?
That is correct.
So we're, we're trying to stop them from suing us.
I don't think that's the case. I think the case of that Karen is to not make it so lengthy, 'cause it can be so drawn out, that they're trying to, like, narrow that down so that it could, the decisions can be made. That's my perception.
Sounds like the due process then is coming inside of the, the code enforcement board, and then they're not getting their due process outside of the code enforcement board.
I di- I disagree with that. The whole due process is notice and opportunity to be heard. Those, if you, if you have those two things, you have satisfied the United States Constitution's requirement for due process. Notice, opportunity to be heard. So the first part is what the code enforcement officer does. He goes, he says, "This is a violation," gives them not one notice, but two, says, "You have the opportunity to be heard, all you have to do is contact this number, we'll set up a hearing." They come before that board, and they are, they are given the opportunity to be heard, and that board may agree, or they may disagree, but they'll take the facts, they'll apply it to the law, and they'll make a determination. And then they have a second bite at the apple in due process, where they can appeal to the district court, and the district court will make the exact same determination. If it was just a, if it was not a de novo review, they would simply look to see that the board didn't do anything wrong, that the board didn't, had substantial evidence, or whatever standard that they apply. But instead, the court is gonna take a look at it again, and I, and the code enforcement officer has to go back to court, present the evidence again anew. This is what we did, here are the facts of the violation, here's the law, and the court would have to make that determination. And if that, if that wasn't enough, that decision could then be appealed to the Court of Appeals and the Kentucky Supreme Court. There's plenty levels of, of, uh, due process and, and the right to defend your rights here. There could not be more.
All right, well, the fourth amendment part of the ordinance bothered me from day one, and it's still, it's still in there. To do the fourth, that's on page sixteen of it, to have the search warrant on that. Uh, and I know you gotta get it from a judge, I know that. But I did do some looking into that for other cities that do that, and there are other cities that do that. But most of the cities I looked into were larger cities, not our size city, larger cities, and they used that when it came to situations in, like, housing authorities, section eights, those types of things is basically what they were used for, not for general purposes of that. Is there any language that that's gonna be used, that it gets defined as to where and when, not just so general?
I think it is defined.
It's defined on what the warrant is here, in the definition of what the warrant is.
It's defined in the criteria that must be met before we can ask a judge for it.
Hmm. I, under suspicion of something, something, I mean, if you're doing a search warrant, it should be something criminal, and this is all civil, right?
Correct. Correct.
So what?
So are housing authority violations, and, I mean.
Yeah, but we're not doing that. I mean, I, this is, that's, that's something that I don't think Georgetown is at the level of, of even putting that into an ordinance. When we get to that level, go back and review it, but for now, I don't know if that's, that we're hanging a warrant over somebody's head.
And there's a real good possibility that it will never be used.
Yeah, but if it's there, it could be. And that's the prob, that's the problem with ordinances. We have a lot of ordinances that are on the books that are never gonna be enforced correctly, or never gonna be used, or never have an intention of being used, but the day could come that it always could be used. And we've had a situation, not currently, but with a code enforcement issue, code enforcement person that took advantage of their position. Now, granted, they gotta get the agreement with it, probably come to you, come to the judge, get the agreement, but I'm just trying to put protections in of, let's not put there so that it can be abused. And we don't need it, if it's not needed, why have it?
We, we think it's necessary. We think it's absolutely core to this ordinance.
If the state didn't.
May I finish?
I'm sorry.
We think it's absolutely core to this ordinance. And we've established that no entry like that can be done without a judge's order. We, we are not, we are trying to protect citizens from code violations and looking for an effective means to do that. Uh, we're looking out for the neighbors of the people who, who are, are, are being unfortunately treated by code enforcement violations. We, we think we've honored due process from start to finish, and that requires a judge. I'd, I'd just simply disagree completely.
Well, if the state thought it was that important, I think the state would have put it in there to put this in here. So the feeling of, you're, you're, this is the, or, this is what gave you the authority to do the ordinance, but why are we stepping so far over what the authority was there? I mean, I don't understand why that would even be consideration for, for Georgetown at this point in time, to want to warrant that. So.
Can I provide maybe an example, that you could use that? If somebody was collecting poisonous snakes in their house, which I think is against the law, and Andrew?
Yes, sir.
And it's in a neighborhood full of children, and somehow those snakes get out. We're not allowed to get a judge's order to go in and fix that situation. We're, we're talking about a safety issue with children, or is it a sentence? I'm just going to an extreme example, but I can see where maybe we might have to use that.
We had a real-life example of a lion in a home in Scott County, five, six years ago.
I remember a friend has a lynx in his house, but he's in Tennessee. He has a license.
Well, the thing with the snakes, if, if that's against the law to have it, then that becomes something criminal? Would that not be a criminal?
The lion in the house was not a criminal issue.
It wasn't until it went to court.
It is now.
Changed it. Now it is.
And there, and there may be, while, while we're, while we're working real hard to accommodate the council's concerns, there are points upon which we're gonna disagree, and people are just gonna have to vote no. This does not need to become politicized, but we do need action on it. We've been working on this ordinance for four months. It's been three weeks since the last council meeting. At that time, we provided you with a new copy of the ordinance and a copy of the state statute, and we have heard nothing from anyone about any questions or any concerns about the ordinance. We're trying very hard to reach out to the council to make this work in a way that's reasonable.
I would.
But it's time.
I would suggest you take a straw poll on where you're gonna take it out or leave it in, and then we can move forward.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
And I promise you, this is not, this is not geared towards any individual. As, as, as we've all driven around Georgetown, it goes back to Polly's question about blight and deterioration. And, and I've, I've read this, I'm reading it again, uh, starting on page twenty-two through twenty-four, if I'm not mistaken. If, if we, I'm trying to find it real fast here.
Start from.
So if we give notice.
Twenty-two.
To a homeowner for blight and deterioration because of a condition or conditions, I realize that they have a ninety-day, they have ninety days to correct that issue or issues, and then they can get an extension on that. At the end of the day, if that homeowner decides that they are not going to fix that issue or issues, we are, we have it at our disposal to file eminent domain.
If, if the board determines that it has abandoned urban property, which is a lengthy list of criteria that has to be met.
What if it, what if it's not abandoned? What if somebody's actually had the.
If it's not abandoned, or it's, if it's not abandoned, then it can't meet the definition, and it cannot be eminent domain. It could be eminent domain for other reasons, but if it doesn't meet the definition of abandoned urban property, it's called the vacant property review commission for a reason. They have to be vacant properties. If people live in them, then it is not a justification under this section to have eminent domain.
Is that in here, though?
Yes.
It is what, where is?
It's in the definition of abandoned urban property.
What, what, is there anything, what, what if that, if the property's not abandoned? What do we, how, how is that addressed?
If, if the property is not abandoned, see, the, the vacant property review commission is one of those alternative tools that the legislature has provided. It's not gonna be our first go-to. It's truly meant to be, we, we started sitting down, um, we, we created a kind of code enforcement, um, committee with the idea of sitting down with some of these properties that we've identified over the years as vacant or as blighted, and sitting down with them and saying, "Hey, you know what? We wanna help you with this, we have options that you can take. We have different sort of à la carte menu items that we can offer you as assistance." And this is just kind of the first step. The, the vacant pla- property review commission is one tool in our toolbox for addressing abandoned property. But if it's not abandoned, and it's still blighted, then we have our regular code enforcement scheme that we can follow. We can, we can cite them, a, a notice of violation for, um, a violation of the property maintenance code, which, if it's blighted, it most certainly is, it's probably multiple violations. And we could either take them to court, if it's bad enough to be demolished, that might be the, the appropriate course of action. If it's, you got some loose shutters and some gutters falling off, and it looks really bad, and it's, you got mosquitoes and things like that, and it just needs to be cleaned up, that's an appropriate action for the code enforcement board. You get a notice of violation from the code enforcement officer, you get your due process, your opportunity to be heard, and assuming a resolution in favor of the city, we are then empowered to go and fix that, and we have lean against the property for recovering those costs. That's the whole process wrapped up in one sentence. So we always have that under this ordinance.
Is that, is it the same way today before the ordinance, as it would be after?
That's, that's the same generic process that we currently follow.
And that's not, not going to change if this ordinance passes, it's still gonna remain the same?
No, that, that will go away, because that's what's being repealed. The state has repealed the current statutory scheme that we operate under, which is called nuisance code enforcement.
I guess my concern is, if the homeowner decides they're just not going to do anything at all, what do we have at our disposal, what? Because I mean, at the end of the day, though, if they, they, they continue to not, basically just taking that person, that homeowner, to court.
This is what empowers. This is what empowers us to administratively address that.
I have a question, I was following on what Mark's saying. So if we put lien after lien after lien, would there, or is there an option in here to, to go after them to get our, our money and make them settle it on the court out steps?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's in the ordinance, it's in state law.
Okay.
Didn't state law say, and maybe it's not with, maybe it's not with that sec, maybe it's not with that situation, but when there's a lien, that it still doesn't come in front of other liens?
It comes in front of all liens except for city and county taxes, and school taxes.
And mortgage, state, state taxes and federal taxes?
But mortgages, it would supersede mortgages.
Okay, so it doesn't come first, but it's in the top, it's in the top.
It's likely to get paid.
If, if, and it's a real good if, to preserve that position, we have substantial administrative tasks that we have to do to preserve that legal right for ourselves. And if we stub our toe on any of those administrative steps, then the citizen is not helped.
We lose our, we lose our lien priority.
So, there is a higher administrative burden on us as well to do this correctly.
But that is the same as today. If you don't do the procedures right today, then you've got.
Well, sort of. They've had additional, more burdens than required.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, a couple of things that Karen said, and maybe just because I missed it, but one thing was that she said that people would be brought in front of the board. And my understanding is that nobody goes in front of the board unless they want to go in front of the board.
That's correct.
And want to appeal a decision, right?
That's correct.
And the other one was that they would have to be represented by an attorney?
No.
No.
But to understand the ordinance, it needs to have an, they need to have an attorney.
Firmly believe that somebody should be able to represent themselves. The one other thing that I wanted to ask about, as a, as a real example, why we're doing this, to make sure that we cover this, is we have a stormwater retention basin that is owned by a holding company, that's owned by a bank. We can't really go after them, because they don't want the property anyway. They don't care if we put liens on that property. Does part of this ordinance help us into enforcing that? The one where it talks about the administration hold, would that help us enforce it on their other properties? Because they own a property across the street.
It could, if they, if they had a, if that property owner had a non-compliance issue, and they had not resolved it, if they come to seek a, a building permit, then they would be denied that permit. The only true way to systemically get at those kinds of issues is through our HOA ordinance in, in the future, which we're working on. But that, that is sort of a subset issue, or maybe even a completely separate issue.
This is a commercial property.
Right.
Which we passed the stormwater maintenance ordinance last year. Does that not give us any teeth to go after the people who own that?
It does. It, it gives us teeth in that it helps to define who is responsible and what the consequences are if you don't follow it, if you don't keep up that responsibility.
Would this ordinance help us enforce something like that, or would we have to revert back to the stormwater?
Well, the, bear in mind that this ordinance is a procedural vehicle. It's, it's a jar, if you will, and you take your various substantive provisions, like stormwater, and you either put them in that jar or you don't. So that, that's the best way I can have of describing what this ordinance would do for stormwater.
So we could use this as a vehicle to enforce the stormwater?
Correct.
The, the procedures would be beneficial for enforcing this.
And we have put, that, that's another one that we put in there. We put like the illicit discharge ordinance in there for the, I don't, I don't believe we put in there the stormwater post controls, because that is all contractual at this point. And I believe we had, the, the idea was get this in place, and we have some future items that we'll be bringing back that we hope to bring into, we hope to bring under the umbrella of the code enforcement board. Perhaps the revenue commission, or there might even be a way to do certain traffic items that way. Currently, those things are judicial only.
So currently, the revenue cabinet is not represented in this ordinance?
They're not.
Okay, all right, well, that, I feel there. And actually, one, you can sue, or the city can send violations according to this to a homeowners association?
A property, if they're the owner of the property, absolutely.
So like common ground, or I guess that's what would be owner?
Common area?
Common area.
And going back to a question earlier, there clearly will be expenses with setting up this process. In addition to the fact that, that we know we need more than one code enforcement officer, so there's likely to be an increased personnel cost, just as we do a better job with code enforcement in general. And I believe when we started the conversation, or during the first presentation about this, we, we projected a startup year number of ten thousand dollars of what we thought this would, there's, this board would, to function correctly, would probably be a paid board. There would be some administrative staff. So we took a stab at establishing the first year's budget. We wanted to be right up front with the fact that there will be procedural costs involved. And we didn't want to hide from those from the beginning.
You'd have to hire an attorney, it's going to be more than ten thousand dollars. And the board needs an attorney, and it can't be, it can't be the city attorney, correct?
It can be, but we recommend that it not. But I instead am representing code enforcement as a plaintiff.
Okay, that's, well, that's what I thought, so you're going to have a, an attorney, if it.
If it comes down to where they, that case, yes.
Right.
It's not, it's, it's not fair to say that they have to have an attorney.
Well, I'll tell you this, if you read what it says in here of how the board chooses the, the chair of the board chooses the hearing officer, all that the hearing officer has to be, have knowledge in, they're going to have to figure it out. That's not going to be the average person doing that position. It's written, and it's not written by you, that's written by the state. That it's written so that it's going to have to be somebody that has expert on that due process, and all along that, and it's not going to be the average individual that's going to sit on that board. And they have to then do the report in, what, twenty-four hours? Isn't that in there, too? That they have to have the report from the board to the person appealing it within twenty-four hours?
I can't recall, but that's.
So, I mean, that's not going to be done by the average individual sitting on, sitting on the board.
No, but you might could get a retired attorney that might do it, or something, you know?
Be cheap.
Be cheaper than.
Cheaper than, is that what you're saying?
The hearing officer is going to be, expected to be paid. I mean, it's that simple. And the hearing officer is going to, I, I think we.
You've got a hundred dollars in there for everybody.
Right. Well, we've got a hundred dollars for when the board needs to meet.
Uh-huh.
And then I think we put in a cost provision for the hearing officer with it not to exceed clause five hundred dollars. So, a hearing officer is, is going to, you know, an average case is probably going to take some time.
Yeah.
And it's going to, we're, we're going to have to see if that amount works, and, and if it's a problem, we adjust it. But I think we've made a good faith estimate as to the amount of time that it's going to take, and the amount of money that it's going to take for any particular appeal. And, and you help offset those costs by the fact that if someone appeals, they face a potentially higher penalty. I say potentially, it's not an automatic. But the board can say, look, we had to pay five hundred dollars to provide a hearing officer. Your, your fee is five hundred dollars more.
To appeal?
Absolutely. If they lose. If they lose.
Well, okay, 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 okay.
Yeah, if they win, then we owe, we may owe them money.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
All right, so what are we going to do?
I would like to.
Can I just say one thing, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say that I respect what Polly has said about anybody futuristically attorney having the say. But I also don't want to tie someone's hands, that they're here every day, this is what they do. While we're out doing our other thing, we're relying on information from them. And so, I, I'm not opposed to them bringing us the information like every quarter, but still not stronghold them to the point where they couldn't make those decisions, because this is a really good solid foundation for us to get started on, and absolutely room to tweak it down the road when we move forward, is, is my thought on it, you know? I just wanted to throw that out.
Mayor?
I can just add one thing.
Yeah.
On it, I see where you're coming from, and, you know, I think there's so many sides to it. And kind of, basically, what I had been told is, you know, the people that collect money, you know, for the government, you know, your city clerk, your county clerk, your sheriffs, and just that, you know, having an unelected person in charge of collecting liens, kind of, it puts them in a, a difficult position, I kind of think. And if anything were to go wrong, or, you know, and they're, you know, and in here, there's no, you know, there's not an elected official over that person. So that's what kind of, you know, it's just that checks and balances.
Yeah, but let me, let me just say this logically. When a person owes a fine, and they, you know, right now, we're not getting any of the money, okay? Because we have nothing really with teeth. So, let's just say that someone comes in, and it's probably going to be a case-by-case basis, okay? But you're giving that person an opportunity, when they come in, they're going to pay that fine, whatever that fine was, and only giving him an opportunity to say how much of a penalty they're going to have, if any. There could be extenuating circumstances. I'm just saying that they're going to, he's going to collect it, they're going to come back and tell us what they've done, because he's going to be held accountable to us after doing it. It's just a place to start.
You're not going to be held accountable to us after it's done, it's before it's done that there's accountability.
Well, I think when, but I think when you're going in there knowing that you're going to be held accountable for the decisions that you make, that it's going to be brought back to council.
Right, that's the nature of most jobs.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're really not, Andrew can do whatever, not Andrew, the city attorney, sorry, Andrew, can do whatever they choose to do under this, and there's no accountability to us whatsoever. We can fuss about it, and we can say we don't agree with it, yada, da, 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 but there's no accountability here.
Well, I think what was confusing for me is when I read the KLC version and the state version, it doesn't even have any of this in here about the city attorney. That, their versions were like about twenty-eight pages, and our version's going on fifty, so.
Well, that can be changed as well as anybody else, anything else could be. If it looks like it's being abused, or if it's not being done right, or whatever. But I just feel like that we need to have something in place so that we can move forward, because we can't.
Kind of the downside of that is you don't find out there's a problem until there is a problem at the state, and then you have to go ahead and rewrite it.
But we've had a problem for a long time.
Yeah, well, there has been problems.
Yeah, so, you know, we just need to address it.
I think that's the whole issue, we're trying to resolve these problems.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to resolve them in the best way we all can. You know, everybody's got a different.
And we're trying to force, yeah, and we're trying to see as much as we can. But, you know, I think that, that's just the way that I'm leaning. But I, I just think we need to do something, so.
At this point, we're going to choose door number one or door number two.
There's the door number three, correct?
Pardon?
There is a door number three, correct?
Yeah, that's over there.
Door number three is not doing anything.
Well, door number three would be the one we gave first reading on already.
That's correct.
Yeah, without anything.
That's true.
That's true. I seen correctly, that certainly is. These are non-binding votes. I'm not asking you all to register a vote for the minutes. I'm just looking for your feelings at the moment. So we proceed with the right first reading. And if this is an awkward process, forgive me, because this isn't parliamentary procedure as I learned it. This is just trying to work with the council to, to get to a good outcome. One clear option, we've got, I'm trying to figure out the sequence to do this thing, so I get the best feel from the council. One option is to strike the provision entirely. That gives the city attorney the ability to settle any of these. Why don't we take that one first?
That he doesn't, he can't settle them?
He can't settle, that, the provision, giving the city attorney that authority would be not included in the first reading.
Okay.
So, if y'all would raise your hands on who prefers the provision be completely stricken?
No, I'll say me.
One, two. Two to strike it. How many are comfortable with the ordinance as it's been presented, the way it's written today?
I had a second reading?
You mean, once you got, we'll read right now, right now?
Did initially.
That, the one we did initially.
Okay.
And that would actually be a second reading. One, two.
Yeah, but how is that different then?
Yeah, what's the next choice?
The, the option, the, the.
Quarterly reporting.
Quarterly report.
Quarterly report.
Let me, let me do that one second, because that, that would constitute a first reading, and both of these first two choices would be the first readings that I mentioned to you, we would do. So, what I'd like to know now is who would be in favor of amending the, the provision to require the city attorney to give us quarterly reports of any settlements he's done?
I can live with that one.
The city attorney has that ability, but he would have to give the council quarterly reports. One, two, three, four, five, six. With council's permission, and I, I think it's been a valuable conversation. I think even the questions where we disagree, they're valuable to explore and understand where we agree and disagree. And I'm going to ask city clerk to give us first reading of the ordinance that maintains the provision. I'm sorry.
Can we not do a straw vote on the third option?
Yes, sir, but I've already counted eight.
You've got three options. We've got no hands, one hand, and two hands, okay? So I was going to vote two hands on the one that we have.
Oh.
I would go along with the way it was written.
You want to go sixteen? Well, I see.
I'm okay with the reporting one, but I'd rather just go along with what we have.
And in fact, I think, after we've discussed it, after we've talked about it internally, I think Andrew and I are comfortable with a required quarterly report.
Does the reporting have to be in the ordinance, or could that be just an administrative thing? That's what I was going to suggest after.
That's a question for you.
I think that's a good question.
I think it would need to be in the ordinance, because it's part of it. I mean, you need to have that requirement, otherwise it's not binding.
I mean, if we tell the attorney we want it to be reported on it.
It's in the ordinance.
Is it?
The new one.
That would be a, a first reading.
I'm trying to get this thing put to bed.
Chuck's trying to get it put to bed. And, and I appreciate your effort to do that, Chuck, but if, if any member of the council is more comfortable with having us slightly alter the ordinance and make that reporting requirement an ordinance requirement, I'm willing to wait two weeks. And if, if, if you're comfortable with that, then I think that leaves us at the point of a first reading of the code enforcement ordinance retaining the city's turn, city attorney's ability to settle and requiring the city attorney to give a quarterly report on anything that's been said.
Not to complicate things any further, but it could pass that as a municipal order.
Which is equally binding.
Why not?
I mean, we've never bucked.
I'm certainly not going to buck one.
Wait, you mean, we can have the second reading of the ordinance, then come down and do a municipal order with?
The municipal order first.
What Andrew's pointed out, to give equal weight to the council's concern, that we can have second reading as it's written, and then ask, then council pass a municipal order directing us with the force of your authority to do this reporting on a quarterly basis.
Y'all are comfortable with that?
That gets us to the same place, and does save us two weeks.
I'm good with that.
Down.
For clarity, this is so the mayor understands it, okay? We are, we are now, we are voting on this, we're going to have second reading of the ordinance as it was presented to you three weeks ago. And it's our expectation that if this passes, that we'll then follow this with a municipal order directing the city attorney to. order directing the city attorney to give a quarterly report of any settlement actions he's been involved in.
Take the language right out of what's in the ordinance, it's one sentence. We can, you can just simply have a municipal order to.
In the, in the interest of moving the issues, I think we've reached consensus on what we want to accomplish. So we are, we are having second reading of the ordinance that was presented to you three weeks ago.
The summary hasn't changed, by the way.
An ordinance related to code enforcement summary. Creates a code enforcement board pursuant to KRS 65.88001265.8839. Establishes terms, organization, powers, and jurisdiction of the board. Establishes procedures for enforcement proceedings, issuance of notices, violations, citations, contesting a citation, hearing notice, final orders, and appeals. Authorizes hearing officers to conduct hearings on behalf of the board. Establishes procedures for abatement liens and fines, lien holder notification system, lien priority, due process, and right of entry. Stop work orders, administrative search warrants. Establishes schedule of penalties applicable to violations of ordinances subject to enforcement by the board. Provides a schedule of department responsibility for enforcement of ordinances for references only. Provides for enforcement by citation officers. Provides for non-exclusivity of arrivity. Amends section 2-112 regarding the code enforcement officer to remove the cap of one position and remove reference to risk management duties. Amends section 2-181 of the code ordinances to reflect change in responsibility for enforcement of the nuisance ordinances. Creates a vacant property review commission pursuant to KRS 99.700 to 99.730 and assigns those duties to the code enforcement board. Amends section 4-151 of code ordinances to clarify corner lot requirements for fences. Amends section 3-337-18, 7-19.1, 7-28-38, 8-99, 9-24, 12-20, 15-1, 15-16, 15-17, 15-41, 15-47, and 15-83 of the code ordinances to reflect enforcement by the code enforcement board. Repel sections 2-113, 3-34, 4-6, 4-36, 4-161, 9-5, 9-6, 9-7, 15-25, 15-26, 15-27, 15-43, 15-44, 15-45, 1737, and 17-38 of the code ordinances in their entirety. Amends section 9-2 of the code ordinances to declare failure to maintain utilities conclusive in dwelling unfit for habitation. To prohibit the open storage of equipment, furnishings, appliances, scrap salvage materials, or junk direct vehicles or parts in net, to prohibit the maintenance of pools or spas without proper security. Amends section 15-41, 15-42, and 15-46 of the code ordinances to reflect change of responsibility for sidewalk inspection and inventory to the city engineer's office and to require changes to sidewalks to be performed consistent with applicable codes. Amends section 4-21 of the code of ordinances to adopt the most recent versions of the international and Kentucky building and residential codes. Amends section 4-51 of the code of ordinances to adopt the 2014 National Electric Code. Amends section 4-91 of the code of ordinances to adopt the 2015 National Fuel Gas Code. Amends section 4-106 of the code of ordinances to adopt the 2012 International Mechanical Code. Amends section 4-121 of the code of ordinances to adopt the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code with local amendments consistent with previous existing ordinances. Amends existing provisions to allow battery powered smoke alarms in existing structures under certain conditions. Provides for severability of provisions, repeal of inconsistent ordinances, and an effective date of October 1, 2016, and after passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324. Introduced and publicly read for the first time August 22, 2016. Publicly read the second time September 12, 2016.
Thank you. That ordinance was sponsored by Mr. Marvin Thompson.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Taggert. And we'll call the roll.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
No.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Nope.
Mrs. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes surprise, 6 to 2. Now, we'd be glad to entertain a municipal order that would require the city attorney to report on a quarterly basis. Mr. Showalter with that motion?
I'll second it.
Bradley with second. And on this one, I think we can just do a, a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I've got to be consistent.
You don't want him to report quarterly.
No, I didn't want it in there in the first place.
I voted no too.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda. Look at the crowd.
Get back to our sleep.
They have to be here, right?
You want to kill the crowd, bring up a code enforcement. We have second reading of our property tax ordinance.
An ordinance providing for and making the real property, personal property, motor vehicle, and watercraft tax levy for city purposes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016 and ending June 30, 2017 inclusive. Whereas the city council for the city of Georgetown, Kentucky is required by KRS 92.280 to enact by ordinance each year a tax levy on all real property, personal property, motor vehicles, and watercraft. Now therefore be ordained by the city council for the city of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that the following tax levy is hereby made by, for city purposes for the city of Georgetown, Kentucky for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016 and ending June 30, 2017 inclusive to wit. For the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016 and ending June 30, 2017 inclusive, there is hereby made a tax levy of 6.5 cents on each $100 of assessed real property. 6.5 cents on each $100 of assessed personal property and 16.8 cents on each $100 of assessed motor vehicles and watercraft which tax proceeds shall be designated to the general fund for the general operation of city government. Section 2, all matters relating to the payment of the taxes imposed on motor vehicles and watercraft herein there shall be in accordance with KRS Chapter 134-800. Section 3, that upon all taxes for real property and personal property levy here with which are unpaid on January 21, 2017, there shall begin to accrue, attach, and be added from said date a flat penalty of 15% onto the total amount of said taxes then due and payable through January 31, 2017, after which the flat penalty shall be 20%. Additional tax bills not paid before March 1, 2017 shall have added to them interest at the rate of 1% per month or fraction of a month until said taxes are paid. The penalty and interest as provided herein shall be added to said unpaid taxes and collected by the city finance director or the city clerk. Should the real or personal property tax herein become delinquent, the city financial officer, the city clerk, and/or the city attorney are authorized to file suit to collect all delinquent taxes plus court costs and expenses, including a reasonable attorney fee incurred by reason of delinquency. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of the ordinance. Section 5, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 6, the ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. Publicly introduced and read for the first time August 22, 2016. Publicly read the second time September 12, 2016.
Motion.
Thank you, motion's been made.
I'll second.
And second. And if there are no questions, since that's an ordinance, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Yes.
Mrs. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving right along.
We're on the roll now.
We are on the roll now and, and we're getting ready to, to get into some stuff that, that council's been real interested in for a long time. Tonight, we're going to ask you for resolutions or, yeah, resolutions authorizing us to apply for TAP grant for West Main Street and for a CMAT grant for Cardinal Drive. And just a few comments while we work on our technology. We, Kyle's has worked real hard on this to. We, we've tried to understand the size of the grant pools so that we make our application of a size that's likely to get funded. If, if we submit an application that's for a huge amount and dominates a grant pool, they're just going to reject our application. So we, we, we understand how important these things are to the council and, and we've worked real hard to, to put together applications that we think will be very competitive. So that we can begin the progress that we want to make from our meetings with the transportation cabinet and the heritage council, we understand that we're going to have to do this in phases. But we have to get started before we can, before we can get to the conclusion. And the phase that we want to focus on with the TAP grant will begin with, with work on our viaduct on the bridge over West Main Street. Some real important things will happen with the viaduct and that area of Main Street. This is where we've had the idea of putting curb, median, and sidewalk on the roadbed. And from, from walking the area, and you've all been down there, we think that widening the pedestrian areas on the viaduct will give a very comfort, a more comfortable overlook for the viaduct on both sides. It'll be safer and it'll be a lot more comfortable for, for citizens. We've anticipated extending our downtown street lighting scheme to the end of that bridge. Now, eventually, we'd like to go further, but in terms of cost considerations for now, we, we've stopped the green lamppost at the end of the viaduct. And Kyle's got a, got a great graphic that, that shows the phases of the project.
As Mayor Tiedoff, this is the TAP grant for West Main Sidewalk. Currently, we're proposing three phases. I'm colorblind, I only see two, but red phase would be the primary phase. After discussing with the state, projects that have a start that's connected to something, they tend to get more, more benefit out of. And as we, we progress further than that. This first phase, as the mayor was saying, is the, probably going to be the most expensive because we've been working with the heritage council to, trying to make this more competitive. If we add that heritage component to it and kind of update the, the viaduct, kind of restore it a little bit, then make this, this bit a little bit more competitive. The key thing that would, which makes this phase so much more expensive is we need to start installing stormwater. Infrastructure, there currently is not any stormwater infrastructure from the viaduct all the way to the top of the hill. I want to say Montgomery area. There are currently two catch basins on top of the viaduct and the center of the viaduct. So they catch all that water and it's cause for concern for long-term viability of that. So part of the stormwater that will be, infrastructure will be putting in, will capture that water coming down the hill before it gets to the viaduct and put it down into the creek, detain it, treat it. So the, the first phase comes out, the engineer's estimate is $1.3 million, which is a decent amount, and 20% of that would be $279,400, which would be the match.
It's an expensive beginning, but we think we've, we think we're aiming at the sweet spot of what might be available. Now, something I've had a chance to discuss with Kyle and I've discussed with the finance committee, but something that we, we'd like to have a discussion with council about is, this will strike some as unusual, but the minimum grant match is 20%. It has been suggested to us, and we've mulled this over and we've vetted it as much as we can, that because we really want this grant, we want to get started. We want to make our application as attractive as it can be. It has been suggested and we're ready to recommend tonight that we submit this grant application with a 25% match, which increases our local cost, but we think it also will make our grant application far more competitive and stand out from the crowd. So it's something we want to discuss with you. It is, it would be us taking a very aggressive stance, not the minimal position, but a more aggressive position in trying to get this funding. That's an additional cost to us of around $65,000.
69,850.
69,850.
The total would be 349,250.
So it's not that we just want to spend $69,000 more money, but we would like for our $1.3 million grant application to be as competitive as we can possibly make it. So.
When would this come to pass if it was awarded?
Next budget probably.
The application for the TAP grant, the application itself has to be in at about three days. We knew that this council meeting was perfectly timed right before we needed to do that. Karen, I'm not sure how quick their approval process is.
It'll probably be early next year before we get a.
January, February, somewhere in that time.
If we get selected and then there's the, the letter of acceptance and then that whole process.
So actually, no money would be allocated officially until the next budget cycle.
Right.
Can't imagine it would be prior to the next budget cycle. And by the time we have to prepare that budget, we hope to have an answer on the grant, whether or not we're funding a want-to or maybe or for sure.
Do, do you have figures on?
I do.
Other two?
So also another reason why this first phase is so expensive is the whole project's going to be designed during this phase. All three phases. Right now, phase two comes out about $237,000 and phase three is 671. So once this gets done, everything else is very much more tangible.
And that was actually advice from the transportation cabinet, that, that we design the project in total in phase one, which lets them know what we're doing in context and creates an expectation of how we move forward. So those costs are front-loaded here.
That first phase, the thing that's in red, if, if we agree that we're going to do that tonight and we get awarded the grant, how long does it take from start to finish to construct that until it's completed, just the portion that's in the red?
I mean, the drawings haven't even been made up yet.
Is it a two-year project or a three-year project or is it less?
Oh, no, it's probably a couple months. I mean, it would be done in a season.
So it could really be, realistically be done by this time next year.
What about the yellow and the green if we keep moving forward?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
No, I interrupted, I'm sorry.
No, hypothetically, if we, if we move forward, the red, are you two colors, right?
Sorry. Yellow and green.
Red, yellow, green.
All three colors. Is it a three-year project? Assuming that we get awarded these grants.
I mean, depending on funding cycles, Mark, as long as.
Three or four-year project?
Uh-uh. The state doesn't always, every year, give out TAP grants. It's, it's based on their funding.
It's a real good possibility that if we can win the grant and get the red part done, next year, we could probably fund the yellow part ourself. By that time, the funding might come out again for the yellow part, so we could look at two of them. We're just estimating, but this is a start and I think if we can, you know, make it that much more viable for us to get the grant, better off we'll be.
So I'm, I'm really content with council adopting this plan to make the improvements and us taking an aggressive posture with trying to get the grant.
Well, without the grant, we're not going to be able to do it, so.
No, sir.
Do you need a motion on the 25% vote versus the 20, Mayor?
Well, I think we need a resolution to authorize us to apply for the grant with a 25% match.
I make that motion.
Millie has a question.
I'm sorry. Just one little question. I want to understand the yellow part and then the green part. You said that the red part, the money may come in in January or February if we're lucky enough to get awarded this amount. And we're asking for 75%, trying to come up with 25, which makes it a little more attractive, I hope. But then, the safety issue is where there is no sidewalk.
Right.
And that could be pushed two to three years from now? I mean, this grant is not available every year, is that what you're?
Most years, it just depends on the funding. I think this year, there's $16 million.
And how many people are trying to get into the?
Everybody.
Yeah, right.
Every council meeting, meet tonight.
Including the county is applying for this grant too, the same grant.
Yeah, that's an important consideration for the council. The Fiscal Court has voted to approve a TAP grant application to extend the legacy trail through the Scott County portion of the horse park. We have heard, we haven't confirmed, but we've also heard that Stampin' Ground may be submitting a TAP grant. Now, we've had these conversations with the Transportation Cabinet. And we've asked the question, does one application harm another's chances? They won't answer that question directly. Is there a likelihood that three grants get funded in Scott County?
No.
No.
You might get one of them.
Is there a likelihood two will be?
No.
Perhaps not.
Maybe not one.
And maybe not one.
Yeah.
But what the folks that Kyle and I have met with in Frankfurt have suggested, that we make our strongest possible application. We allow all the applications to stay live as it goes through their process. Some may get weeded out by scoring. And it's possible. Not certain, but it's possible at some point, we could have to make a choice which grant to pursue. And I think that would have to be a joint decision between the City Council and the Fiscal Court. However, most people I've talked to, certainly council members and Fiscal Court members, have agreed that public safety is the highest priority that we have. So I think that this will top the hierarchy.
Would there be a possibility of, if we're lucky enough to get this, for the yellow and the green area, and green being West Main Street, would there be an opportunity for that money?
To become one?
Well, I was thinking in our budget, since it's pushed forward, is there any chance, is that dreaming, think there might be some money in the budget if there is not another TAP grant available after we do the red? I mean, is that money that we could pull from our resources?
That's a question that I don't think we can answer tonight.
I just wondered what.
We want to get started in the strongest way we can. We can't do it all. So what is our best way to begin? And we think this is it.
I think somebody mentioned over there that, I think maybe, Mark, maybe we could do the yellow at $260-some thousand. Maybe that's something that we might fall on, you know, the following fall.
We will be able to put that in our budget next year.
Certainly, certainly something we could look at and talk about.
The yellow, can you, the start and finish point on the yellow and the start and finish point?
Yeah.
And the green, where those colors begin?
Yeah, it's Montgomery and Highland, and that's because I know.
Is it yellow?
The yellow is Montgomery and Highland?
It goes way up the hill.
And then where does the green end as you're going towards Paines Deep?
Elizabeth Street.
I think that's where you're going to make the sidewalk in behind, weren't you?
Yeah, and that was the point, Mark, when we got out to Elizabeth Street, where we had the suggestion of turning up Elizabeth Street and then turning behind the Water Company's new property in a less expensive route, once we get to the green.
Safer, and safer too.
Signs of pedestrian walkway.
Yeah.
It's a little too much vertical banking there and high speed.
Rough curve right now, too.
Be very expensive. But it's. Store and fencing as well.
So, Ms. Tacka made a motion.
I did.
And I laid out there.
Millie, I think seconded.
Did you make a second? Well, thank you. So, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions for Kyle about the TAP grant?
Nope.
No questions, but the resolution reads 20 instead of 25.
Yeah, it really does.
And the number is wrong, would be wrong.
Right.
I can't give a math, but the number's wrong on that.
Can I just say we're making those changes in my motion?
Well, you already did for 25% math.
You did for 25%.
And you mentioned the 25%.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, and that was your second, right, Millie?
Yes.
Good, just making sure that the motion and the second match. If there are no further questions on the TAP grant, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. We will get that in within the next couple of days. All we lacked was this resolution to accommodate it. The next large grant that we're seeking is on Cardinal Drive. And we've talked about the project on Cardinal Drive. In the big scope of what we wanted to do was three-lane the entire length of Cardinal Drive, which is the ultimate solution. The problem is, if we three-lane all of it, we're looking at a $5 million project and we're not going to get a $5 million project funded. It's just not likely to happen. So, Kyle has worked with our engineers at Strand and we think we've come up with a great way to start this project in a phased manner. And it will include left and right turn lanes from Long Lick onto Cardinal Drive, which is where a lot of the morning congestion occurs right now, anyway. And also, I'll let Kyle show you on the map. Kyle, I'm not colorblind, I can barely see it, but we're looking at two improvements right in front of the schools that will total, a project that will total $1.25 million for Cardinal Drive and give us as much relief as we can get in Phase One. So.
Right, so as the mayor was saying, the red area, section one, that will provide a queuing area and a right turn lane heading eastbound on Long Lick. It'll provide a queuing in the left turn lane heading westbound on Long Lick. So, people aren't trying to pass on shoulders and that's where we're getting a lot of the very close calls, accidents. The other two areas, section 2A and 2B, those will also provide queuing areas for turning into the high school and the middle school. It'll also increase safety for our traffic guards there. It'll give them some space. I mean, that's really all we're shooting for right now with this first run. But similar to the TAP grant, you know, this one has a traffic study and this one has the design component, all on the front end. So, the whole project will be designed during this phase and going forward will be much easier and cheaper.
Now, that's an important point that Kyle just made because many people have asked the question, if we get this grant and make these improvements, will Cardinal still be one-lane part of the time, two-lane part of the time? And frankly, we don't know that answer yet. Part of the traffic study and the design will help us answer that question. So, we know that the improvements will help and we'll have the design component finished. And Chief, we think that these improvements along Lick will help you all with some of your overtime requirements. We're making Cardinal Drive work, but we're burning up a lot of police overtime to make it work. And long-term, we'd like to reduce those expenses. And we think this will help us do that.
This is not the full fix. This is a start toward that.
This is the beginning.
But this helps reduce a lot of the safety, the biggest safety concerns that we have.
And on this one, we're comfortable with the 20% match. Staying at the 20% match. We were simply on that other one, taking that extra effort. And Mr. Bradley's made a motion.
What was?
And Ms. Tacka has seconded it, so we can have full conversation now.
I'm sorry, he, I think.
The total was $1,254,000 with the, I didn't write the 20% down. Yep, $250,800.
Yes, sir, Mark.
Several, two questions early. I know we've had several discussions over the past year and a half, I guess. I know Millie has brought it up, Mr. Bradley has brought it up. I've talked about, and I think several others have talked about. And we talked about public safety on West Main. Now, we're a few short weeks away from time change. It's fast approach.
We sure are, aren't we?
And I think you were the last one to bring this up. I think it needs to have. We've got to have streetlights out there.
We do.
At the corner of Cardinal and Long Lick, but also at the corner of 25 and Long Lick. I mean, it's extremely dark early in the morning and also, and those aren't the only two intersections, but if we're talking about this grant, I think the streetlights have got to be as equal of importance.
Okay.
And again, that's just my opinion. I think there's a need.
Well, and council's been very articulate in talking about the need for streetlights here. You've mentioned several times about Pear Spike and how dark that corridor is. So, we absolutely have work to do with streetlights. Since, I would hope, Mark, that since we're including a design component in this Phase One of Cardinal Drive, that design component should not only give us roadway improvements, but also the lighting improvements that we need to see. Any other questions for Kyle? We've got a motion and a second. So, all in favor of this resolution for the C-MAT grant at a 20% match, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.
Thank you, council.
So, our deadline for the C-MAT grant is the end of this calendar month. Deadline for TAP grants in two or three days and we will make sure that both of those deadlines are met. Thanks, Kyle. Under 11, Finance. We have a municipal order to approve uniform purchase bids for the Fire and Police Departments. Pretty much a routine thing, although the Police Committee has had the good fortune of sitting with our chiefs and looking at the new uniforms that we're going to. You'll notice Chief Swanigan, white-blue uniform, which is what we've used for some time. We're actually going to a darker uniform. Is it closer to Chief Ford's? We're going to a dark navy uniform that is a bit more modern. I think the shirt that's worn under the ballistic vest is more comfortable. You all got to look at them. We're real pleased with the way, we think our officers will look. This style of uniform is hard to get now. We actually got a gift of a bunch of uniforms from the Lexington Police Department a number of years ago. And, but we've pretty much worked our way through that inventory and we think now we need to do that. So, if you'd read the news for.
An order approving the purchase of Fire and Police uniforms from Galls LLC and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas the City of Georgetown issued a competitive bid for Fire and Police uniforms and whereas Galls LLC was the most acceptable vendor for Fire uniforms as selected by the Fire Department Uniform Committee, and whereas Galls LLC was the sole bidder for Police uniforms and was deemed a responsive and acceptable bidder by the Police Department with the exception of Class A uniforms, which were not included in this bid and will be bid separately at a later date. And whereas $600 per member was included in the 2016-2017 budget for the purchase of Fire and Police uniforms. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the purchase of Fire and Police uniforms from Galls LLC bid documents, which are attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, is approved and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Thank you.
Take the motion.
A second. Second was early. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good, we have a similar municipal order to approve the Uniform Rental and Maintenance Bid for our Public Works and Sanitation Departments.
An order approving UniFirst Corporation as the vendor for rental and maintenance of Public Works and Sanitation uniforms and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas the City of Georgetown issued a competitive bid for the rental and maintenance of Public Works and Sanitation uniforms, and whereas UniFirst Corporation was the sole bidder and the bid was deemed responsive and acceptable by the department. Whereas funds are included in the 2016-2017 Public Works and Sanitation budgets for the rental and maintenance of uniforms. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the approval of UniFirst Corporation as the vendor for rental and maintenance of Public Works and Sanitation uniforms bid documents, which are attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, is approved and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Mr. Thompson, and then Mayor James with the second. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Well, at 8:07, it's now the council's meeting, as if it wasn't the council's meeting at 6 o'clock. Let's see, Mark, anything that you've got this evening?
Is it Mr. Rush that was here earlier?
Roach.
Roach.
No, he lived on Rhodes Street.
He lives on Rhodes, okay.
His name was.
His name was Roach.
His name was Roach, yeah.
His name was Roach.
Roach on Rhodes Street.
Yeah.
He lives on Rhodes, his name is Roach.
Yeah.
Name is Rush, okay.
He brought up a very good.
Thought he did.
Topic of discussion.
Thought he did.
Too narrow, isn't it?
It sounds like there's quite a bit more growth coming over the next, whether it be year, two years, four years. The traffic's going to get, I guess, bad if we don't make improvements to that road. And I don't know what those improvements need to be, but I think his comments deserve quite a bit of attention. Anything we can do, I think is needed.
Yeah, I think his request for striping, we ought to do real quickly because that may be one of the few things we can afford to do.
Yeah. I agree.
How much of that road is ours?
All of it.
All of it, I think, just.
Does it go out to the county at some point?
Yeah, it does.
I was looking at the city limits one, when he was talking about it, to see.
The city limits do go on out.
Yeah, it does, because on the opposite side of that, it goes out Cherry Blossom. And Cherry Blossom is there, and then the next one, there's a subdivision, next.
Cherry Hill.
Right out.
Cherry Hill.
Well, not Cherry Hill, but there's a, there's another one.
Stone, something.
Something there. And at the back of it is Pleasant Valley. So it goes all the way out to there and that's where we stop.
Is it Oxford or Old Oxford?
Old Oxford.
Old Oxford.
Well, that, yeah, part of that's counting, yes, sorry.
Yeah, by the map, I'm looking at Parks County.
There's two subdivisions out there now, I'm not mistaken, that are in the city. And then Cherry Blossom, Old, and Police want to come out there as well.
It's all going to connect and even be more traffic on that road. I think we've all watched that for years and wondered when the day of reckoning was going to occur.
Getting closer.
It's getting closer. And as we see with some of these other infrastructure improvements, it's very expensive. That's it. Chuck?
Couple things. Last meeting, we talked about the property tax delinquency list and what we can do if we answered any of those questions that we had about second notices, putting the amount on the next year's bill.
We have had some internal discussions, Chuck, and we like the idea of finding a way to do a second billing to people. One of the difficulties with adding the prior year's bill to the next year's bill, just one logistical problem, is we've got some of these people that have got 10 years' worth. And it becomes a complex exercise in getting the back bills on the property tax bill. But we agree that we're missing an opportunity by not doing a second billing of some type. Tracy and I, uh, in a staff meeting today, talked about that issue, and we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try and figure that one out. We'd love to find an easy way to get a second notice.
If we have somebody that's got ten years, the second notice is not gonna help them. But we need to do something to collect it.
That's in the works.
That's in the works? Okay.
And, and that's the, the, uh, I think you and I may have touched on it before, uh, we are working on a mass file. Where we're gonna make one court file, and it's gonna include, it'll be a mass filing of all these folks that have delinquent property tax bills. So, we are looking at a way to come at that real, com- in a comprehensive way, and not, not have a circumstance where we've got people that have multiple years of unpaid bills.
You thought about having some type of, uh, amnesty to waive some of the interest charges?
We've gotten, we've gotten mixed reports on amnesty. We know it works sometimes, and it gets you a little flurry of income. Some folks who've been around government a long time say it, it kinda sets you up for a failure later, because people get it in their head that, oh, well, pretty soon they'll do an amnesty program, and I'll get, I'll get caught up then. So, we, we kinda, we're, we're, we understand how they can work one time, but we don't want to create an expectation in our citizens' minds that periodically we'll do an amnesty event. We'd rather be more forceful on an ongoing basis.
Right.
I think we're in a good position for that, not to set one up on a regular basis, but to get us in line from all the delinquencies that we've had. Maybe an amnesty would be good right now, just for this time.
And, and it may be. Perhaps we could get this mass filing done and see what response we get, and then evaluate an amnesty approach after we take, after we see how this mass filing works for us.
Or we could talk about selling the tax bills.
We could. We could. That'll be, that'll be a fun discussion. Anything else, Chuck?
There's one other thing that just came up to me, and I was looking over this bid.
Yeah.
On particular product. I just wanted to enlighten you all with personal experience here. Some of these bids are rigged, okay? Some companies, the manufacturers, say only this company's allowed to bid on this product in their territory. And I just happened to be a distributor for one of these companies at one point, okay? So, they're quoting full retail price on some of this stuff, where we could shop it cheaper. You just can't go and ask, put it out to bid, because the only people that are allowed to bid are the people that have the rights to that territory. You see how it's sort of rigged? The manufacturers do it that way, on purpose.
We're not rigging it.
No. The manufacturers are rigging it.
I just wanted to clarify anything there.
Get that on the paper real quick.
No, we're not.
Clear it up on the video.
We're, we're being the victim to the rig. Okay? My company has product X, and we put it out for bid to that. Manufacturer says only one company can bid that.
You know, we, we ran into this, you know, we were here, we ran into this floor on the purchase of garbage truck, and we had concerns about whether or not that, that was a fair arrangement. And I think we've taken pretty great pains to, uh, to use the wording, uh, "or the equivalent" in our bids now. I'm aware that some manufacturers carve up territories, and that's not our best, not in our best interest. But the language, "or its equivalent," hopefully will help us with that and get away from the manufacturers rigging our system.
And maybe we could look into our particular items, not going out to bid on it, but actually shopping it. 'Cause in, in the company.
It'd be nice if we could, we've got a, uh, there'll be a point when we, we would like to have a discussion with you about our procurement policy and the way it's done.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we have a very restrictive procurement policy. You know, for example, most cities and counties throughout Kentucky have a twenty thousand dollar bid limit. We have a ten. There are a number of things in our purchasing policy that reflect some prior practices and prior relationships that we don't think work well today. But we've been busy, and you all have been busy, and we haven't wanted to bring you a new procurement policy until, until it, ours was so clumsy that we couldn't use it anymore, or it just became a higher level issue, and at some point, we'd like to have that discussion with you. We're, we're not quite ready to bring it to you as a package yet, but we trip over procurement policy issues about every day. And we don't want to take any authority away from the council, but at some point, we'd like to have a conversation about what works well for the council and for the administration.
I just wanted to point out that there's some things on there that, that can be bought cheaper by not going to bid like we're going to bid on.
And r- right now, our policy restricts us, restricts us a lot.
For, for the amount of money.
So.
I'm not affiliated with that company anymore, but when I was a distributor, I could sell it to a city law enforcement department, but I couldn't put out a bid on it. Okay? And I could beat the price all day long, but I couldn't go, I couldn't put a bid in. And that's the way the system works.
Tyler, your hand's behind your back.
And we're paying more for stuff than what we could be paying.
We would be delighted to bring you a new procurement policy.
Okay.
Are, are you referencing the, the bids that we approved tonight then?
There's not, not just the specific products, but some of the items that I saw on this bid, looking at it. I used to sell some of that stuff, and I was like, you know, I wasn't allowed to bid on it. And I was looking at the price, and I'm like, we're paying full retail price for this stuff. You know, and the idea of going to bid and, and getting government contract on stuff is to get a better price. We're not, we're paying full retail.
Definitely something to look into.
So, are the, are the, I mean, I know Galls is in Lexington, where was the other group?
Well, I wasn't really mentioning Galls specifically, I was mentioning the manufacturer's policy that. Benefits the dealers like Galls, okay?
Manufacturer.
Yeah. It's the manufacturer's policy.
Uh, it will make Stacy Clark's day tomorrow, when she learns that the council actually asked about proc- uh, purchasing policies. 'Cause she, she's the one who struggles with these regulations the most. We're, we're able to do your work fine, but there are a few things we, we think we could be a little more efficient on.
Maybe we should have Andrew Calm and negotiate with him.
But he had to bring it back to us.
Remember that.
Well done.
Give him a little practice, he'd never get ready for this.
Anything else, Chuck? Connie?
Um, Tom Warner. Nothing. I know, right? I had somebody mention to me the other day, they watch us on TV, and she said, uh, you're fuzzy. I think that we should be able to see you more clear. I said, well, I'll bring it up to council, yeah.
So, we're fuzzy.
We're not supposed to be fuzzy. We still do not have, they, they went so far as to actually come here and install all of the equipment. It's the part over there on Mary Lynn Drive that's not fixed.
Oh, wow.
Actual, the, the, the signal, we now have the ability to get all of the right signal out of this building and over to Mary Lynn, but they don't have the corresponding encoder over there. And if, if, there's not a month that goes by that I don't email them lots of big capital letters, when, when is this coming? And I get, I get a little spur of action, and then, and then it goes cold.
You know, we did just sign a contract here a while back that they were gonna do this in our contract, right?
So, we're closer than we were.
We're closer.
Funny that you say that.
Okay.
But if, if Tom Warner said it was dark outside right now, I'd look out the window to make sure.
There you go, so I understand what you're saying.
Okay. All right, that's what I thought.
We're, we're working on it, and I'll have nothing for you.
Don't believe them at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
In a. I had two.
You had two, all right, well, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to, uh, ask about if we were gonna get anything back on our consultant thing for Public Works.
Yes, uh, and in fact, w- we talked about that today. The, the, uh, survey period has closed, and they got some really good information from the survey. We, we quick, we had a quick conversation this afternoon about could we compile enough of the survey results to give you all some of it tonight?
Me too, Rush.
We couldn't get it ready in time.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but we're, we're, by the next meeting, we'll be able to have the survey information for you, and we should have a, a date when we'll get our formal report.
Okay, thank you.
I think the next step in the process is, we've had one, what they, what they wanna call a working meeting, where they come here, and we all sit around a table and discuss, and I think the next step is the last working meeting, and then, I think we get our report after that.
Yeah, of course. That your understanding, Millie? 'Cause you were in that last working meeting.
I wasn't there, that's exactly what they said, there'd be another meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
All right.
There is a piece of property beside Arby's, don't know who really actually owns that piece of property, but I don't know if it's a, it's a P and Z issue, if there is an issue, but they're filling in the property, and it's getting higher now than, than Arby's. And so, what will happen, the next time we have ten inches in twenty-four hours or twelve inches, Arby's will flood, uh, even quicker, and so will the trailer park behind it as well. So, they, yesterday, it was way up, but today, they're grading it off, and so I don't know if they're continuing to grade it back down so that it's more level, but, but as coming into town tonight, it looked like it was two foot higher than what Arby's is, so there's, it's just common sense, when it rains, it's gonna flood them quicker.
And they've been at that for a while.
Supposed to be a tire plant coming, a tire, tire company coming in there, is what's coming in there.
Tire company?
Tires, yeah, yeah.
Tower.
Tires, on car, tires.
Well, that's, that's just a concern, because I know it floods down there, it's twice at Arby's since nineteen ninety-seven, twice Arby's has gotten it. So, when you add like that, it's just gonna give them a little water.
We'll double check with Kyle and the P and Z, but I think they have a permit.
Yeah, they do.
We were, we talked about it at one of the comp plan meetings here recently, and that, that's what we were told as well.
The permit is given to them by.
It's zoned, that's what it was zoned for.
The grading permit comes from, yeah, you'd have to ask me that. It e- it either comes from the engineer's office or P and Z, but I think it comes from.
A board that we don't have any control over. Okay, thank you.
Well, they might've had to get something from the division of water.
And if it's.
Since it's right on the creek.
It's right on the creek.
Well, that, that's the only thing I was wondering, if, in the back of it, actually, that they might be routing the water to hit the creek there, which of course.
Call the planning zone and just.
Surfing around.
We'll, we'll make that call.
Thank you, appreciate it.
'Cause I know the residents are upset up there, I got a couple ladies that worked at the store, her mom, her lives up there, and she's scared to death.
Well, is the trailer, is the trailer park, I mean, how many times they flood it before Arby's or, or whoever floods? So, they're going to get it, there's no doubt, the next time we have.
Why don't we, uh, get an answer on that permit, and then we'll send council an email.
That'd be great, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. David?
Mayor, I know, I think I mentioned at the last meeting about some of the intersections off of, off the bypass, for example, where Champion Way connects into the bypass close to Kentucky Project. There, and I know it's, it's gonna be just an ongoing problem, if there's gravel and sediment that kinda collects at those places. That was, that was the worst, I noticed it just the other day again. Champion Way and the bypass, and then, was it Champ- or Cherry Blossom and, is it Tanbark or Timberland?
Where the wreck was.
Yeah.
Where the wreck was.
Yeah.
I think it was, I think it was Timberland.
Timberland, I think it was Timberland.
Okay, okay, and then I think it was either Lemons Mill or East Main Extended.
Yeah.
Maybe both.
They're both bad.
Well, for sure, Lemons Mill.
Okay.
Where, where, we, we need that improvement.
Yeah. It was only outside, except where I saw it the worst.
And that's, that's a street sweeper issue, I think. So, council will know, we've talked for some time about Lemons Mill and the improvements to Lemons Mill, where it's in terrible shape as you go out to the Georgetown College Conference Center.
Yeah.
We're, we're, you know, we have been working on trying to put together a larger financing package to not only get it repaved, but to get a big left turn lane, uh, from Lemons Mill onto the bypass, and widen that entrance enough to where it's not rutted on both sides the way it is right now. Uh, we had allocated a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of our MAP funds to resurface Lemons Mill. Uh, county has agreed to put a hundred and twenty thousand with that, which gets us up to two hundred and fifty thousand. We're pretty sure that we have a commitment from the Economic Development Cabinet for another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we've been waiting on, uh, word from the governor's office about a three hundred thousand dollar grant that we're asking for to finish that project, or to finish the funding so we can repave it and have a stack lane. Uh, and with, uh, David, as you and I talked, with Liggett and Platt consolidating a bunch of operations into the Georgetown Business Park, uh, they're gonna have a lot of truck cycles every day, and we're gonna have to have that turn lane and stack lane, or it's just not gonna work for all the factories. Uh, we've discussed internally, uh, something that we did back twenty years ago. If we do not get this grant from the governor's office, we're talking about meeting with the four or five larger factories out there about having them put up the three hundred thousand dollars to complete this public infrastructure improvement, and then us giving them a tax abatement over five years to let them have their money back. So, we get our road improvement, and we're not subject to waiting on the state to help us. So, we've got a Plan A, and we've got a Plan B, uh, and we're hoping to get one of the two up. Anything else, David?
Yes, sir.
Marvin?
Uh, just for the traffic committee, I had a resident over on Copperfield would like you all to look at, maybe putting one, parking on one side, on the north side of Copperfield. She says when they come out those cul-de-sacs out there, cars parked on the opposite side, you cannot see. And I said, I would bring it to you all, and another lady was fussing about the fireworks, and I said, only thing I can tell you is call the police if they're going off, you know? There's supposed to be New Year's Eve and Fourth of July, but she said they're shooting them all the time.
And for those of us who have dogs.
Well, she does, and she does.
She's a lot of dogs.
She does, and it's, uh, it's, it's just a nuisance, is what it is, and I said, I understand, but I said, the council, we have an order that says what time they can, but I guess you just have to call the police. But you all look at.
We, we're in the process of doing a comprehensive parking policy. We sort of jumped in on the Bradford thing.
Okay.
And knocked it out, but, um, or there's one that's gonna cover the whole, the whole city that we're working on.
Well, she was just concerned because coming out the cul-de-sacs, you cannot see, and she, she has to go in one to park in her yard, her driveway, then come out, and it's just hard to see when they're parked on both sides of the road.
Can, can we get like a, like a picture of the intersection or the, right where they're talking about?
It's Ann Rogers Ashley that's, lives on Copperfield, I don't know exactly, she talked to me about it.
Copperfield, um.
Subdivision, it's the first.
I know where it's at.
It's the main drive, coming, coming off of, uh, Paintspeople.
Talking about that is bad.
Okay.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Well, Copperfield immediately have to take a hard left, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It runs all the way over to Walker, is that Walker or, or Walker Way?
I do.
Yeah, it is Walker Way.
Connie, a bit?
I told her I'd just have you all look at it, so, just mention it for her.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Oh, okay.
All right. I had a thing, um, and I've talked to some people about it before on council. Is there any way we could at least get a draft of the council agenda, um, like maybe Wednesday or Thursday? 'Cause we've generally been getting it Friday around four, and a lot of times, some of us have questions, and, um, you know, I like to try to do research, and if it's like a street closing, you know, drive to that street, like, you know, and just check it out and get online and stuff, and with most of us, you know, having full-time jobs and working on Monday, it's hard to make all your calls and do all your research and your driving and traveling. So, if we could just even, I mean, I know putting all that paperwork and the support stuff is.
Just want the agenda.
Yeah, just the agenda, you know, just, that would kinda give us a little idea, I think.
We, we will.
Little heads up.
Do our best to do better on that.
Okay.
It is a, I've been around city government for thirty years, and that's been a request of council members for thirty years.
So, I'm not the first, God, I thought I was.
Can you give us information quick? And, uh.
Just give it a day or so.
We want to do that.
That would just help, yeah, 'cause we're making such important decisions and ordinances and closings and money, and it would just help to have a little more time.
Anything else, Kyle? Millie?
Well, I was gonna bring up Ann Rogers Ashley on Copperfield, and I was also gonna ask you, I made all these notes, you know, I was gonna ask you how that tap grant was going, so you answered that for me. There's one more. There's one more situation where several people that live in the pavilion in those condominiums, and I think I brought it up before, and I think I got the answer, they want a stoplight at the end of that drive to go onto the bypass, but that's a District 7 question, the stoplight here.
Pavilion, Pavilion Drive.
The Pavilion.
Yeah.
Going to Pavilion, and then you...
On to Champion.
On to Champion.
Yeah.
Captain State Road.
Because you've got straight across, you've got the, is it the stables?
Stables.
Yeah.
You've got the stables, and you've got the people coming out that live in the houses in Pavilion, and then you've got the Pavilion itself, they're loading out, and then you've also got the Pavilion condominiums there, and several people have asked me about that.
We, we're happy to send a letter to District 7 and make a request.
Okay.
It, my experience has been those things are exercises in frustration.
Well, they're asking.
They'll promise us a traffic count, and then they'll do a traffic count, and then